Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to our October 6, 2020 Board of Education meeting. Thank you for taking the time tonight to be here. We really appreciate it. I'd like to turn it over to Dwan Kraft to lead us in the invocation.
Thank you. So I'm reading from "Life is Better at the Beach" by Christina Vinson. You close the book with a contented sigh and pack up your beach umbrella. It's time to eat dinner and you've been engrossed in your book for several hours. The sun is beginning to sink, but as you walk back to the beach house, your mind is full. Though the book's main character is fictional, her struggles speak to you. You feel deep compassion for your own sister who has been battling these same problems for the past few months, and the book gives you even more perspective into the battle. It's one of the greatest benefits of reading. It helps deepen your ability to empathize and feel compassion. As you read, your mind engages with the story's characters and you seek to understand them. Reading about other people's emotions shifts your perspective and helps you connect, so you understand others' feelings and relate more easily to what they are going through. Your compassion deepens and your heart softens as you read through struggles you weren't familiar with until you understand the pain and burden on a deeper level. When you arrive home from the beach, challenge yourself to read more. Choose books that explore a person who is different from you, or read a book about someone in a similar situation as yourself. Not only will your compassion for others grow, you may find that you're able to give yourself more grace, mercy, and kindness. Thank you.
Thank you. If everyone would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion from the floor to approve the agenda?
No move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda is approved. Dr. Matt Lutz will now recognize some outstanding individuals.
Well, I am so happy to have the opportunity to recognize our Technology Department, and I believe the entire department is here tonight, and it just makes me very happy to see you all come in because I think the opportunity right now to recognize you. I'm going to call you up, and if you would come on up, and then I'll have Ms. Reynolds. She is your technology head amongst other things in our district extraordinary. Ms. Reynolds, would you please come forward? Sandy took over the Technology Department along with testing, and we've expanded her role into curriculum and other things, so she can do many amazing things. She took over for Paul O'Brien, who had spent many years building the department and outfitting us very well, and she was faced with quite the challenge this year on March 13th when we moved to a remote learning environment. I do believe that the Currituck County School System provided a very robust education, given the circumstances and the time, and she was able to do that with a fine team that I know how much she appreciates them. I'm going to call them up, and I'm going to let you say a few words. Charles Pikel. Ryan Owens. Iron Simpson. Sneak in here. Thelma Kruckshank. Did Iron duck out? I saw him duck out. We'll get him in here in a minute. This group of individuals, single-handedly kept, moved our district into an online world of learning with absolutely selfless service and dedication to the job, and Currituck County Schools and myself would like to thank you for your service.
Good, Charles. Stay there for one second. I'm going to get a picture of Sandy. We get up there with him.
Ms. Reynolds?
All right, on three, ready? One, two, three.
Sandy, would you like to say a few words?
You smile.
Andy, I know how excited you were to walk up here.
I won't tell you all the promises I had to make about cake tomorrow to get them to come and stand up in front, but I couldn't be prouder of our team, what they were asked to do from March 13th on, the amount of devices that we got out in students' hands, what we were able to cobble together, and even when our new devices didn't come in on time. I feel like they have really done amazing things to help our students in the last nine weeks to be able to do what they've done, especially at the elementary level. I just couldn't be any prouder of how they've pulled together this team, how they've helped each other, how they've helped the families in the community, the students and the staff members to try to be able to do what we've done over the past nine weeks. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Iron.
I don't think he came back in yet.
We'll get him tomorrow, Byron.
Public comment session is a time when an individual or a group can address the board about our schools. This is not a time to speak about issues or concerns involving identifiable personnel or students. Matters of this nature should be submitted in writing to the board, and your concerns will be addressed. Good night. Thanks again.
Good night, guys.
Individuals or groups will be called in the order in which they signed up and will be asked to limit their remarks to three minutes. We have two individuals that have signed up tonight, and first we have Amy Monroe. If you would come forward, state your name and--
Iron.
Hey, Iron. State your name and your current address.
Amy Monroe, 136 Meadow Lake Circle, Jarvisburg, North Carolina, 27947.
Thank you.
I scripted myself because I wanted to make sure that I stayed within, tried to stay within your timeframe and not delay. Prior to your last board meeting, I asked you to consider allowing teachers to purchase or make barriers in their classrooms. You discussed that, and it was my understanding that you were allowing Dr. Lutz to research and look into it and for him to decide. Following the board meeting, when we did not get any information on this, I spoke with my principal, and we were told a few days later that Dr. Lutz was looking into the district purchasing the dividers so that teachers would not have to absorb the cost of this safety measure themselves. These are essential for close interaction if you want to have effective small reading groups and math instruction. On Friday, our building principals informed us of Dr. Lutz's decision. We were told that the school was not going to purchase barriers for our reading tables and that furthermore, no barriers would even be permitted in the classroom. Reason being, barriers offer a false sense of security, and a teacher could not purchase their own because if one classroom had them, none of the other, if one classroom had them, they had to be in all of the classrooms. Dr. Lutz, I feel you threw the principals to the wolves that day. We should have heard this important information and explanation from him. She doesn't make enough money for the grief that I gave our principal that day. Grief that was totally directed at the wrong person, and I publicly apologize to Mrs. Chapel because what I should have done is what I'm doing right now is coming to you. She is kind, she is giving, and if I asked her to do something for the kids, she would have sat down on the floor and she would have made them herself. And so for that, I apologize for my frustration towards her. I spent some time over the weekend researching, and I found not one publication from OSHA or the CDC anywhere that gave a hint of mention that barriers were a false sense of security. Instead, I found them recommending them. I sent each of you several publications to read, and I have two with me that I've placed upon your desk. Madam Chairperson, you have the full publications, and so if others would like to read them, but the others just have copies. One is titled Strategies for Protecting Kindergarten Through 12 from COVID-19, dated August 20th. The other is Reducing the Spread of COVID and How to Keep Employees Who Interact with Others Safe, and that's dated September 14th. All of the publications that I sent you, and both of these are either from CDC or OSHA, and they all recommend the use of barriers. I finally did find one publication, however, in all of my Googling, about COVID and the false sense of security, and it was titled Experts Warn Against False Sense of Security as the Number of Children with COVID Increases. I quote, "There's a false sense of security right now for many people. They think their children are not going to get COVID because they have this innate protection against viral infections. That's not true," end quote. So here I am before you now. There are barriers in classrooms all around the United States, doctors' offices, courthouses, businesses, and we have barriers in our very own Currituck County Schools. They are in the front office to protect our secretaries. Someone made the decision here in Currituck that our secretaries need to be protected, and they do, but so do the children and the teachers. Now, due to the lateness in the hour in telling us that the barriers would not be provided or permitted, I was unable to secure a barrier by purchasing a manufactured one, but I have this incredible husband, and he made me one. I told him what I wanted it to look like, and he designed it for me. The cost of the materials were $134. However, I'm a coupon shopper, and without that coupon, my coupons, it would have cost $208. Now, that works out to be $6.70 per student in a classroom of 20, or without the coupons, $10.40 per student. When the day comes that we no longer need these for safety reasons, they can continue to be used in our classroom for differentiated math, reading, and spelling tests. They can be used as dry erase boards, which the size is great for the kids to be able to show their work for their math. And if we decide, if somebody decides at some point that they're not going to be continually used, my husband put them on, mine on hinges, so I can fold them up, but they can also be secured to the horseshoe table in the classrooms. Now, all weekend, I kept thinking, how? How? How can we protect our students? How can we protect our teachers? And then when I was sitting down doing my lesson plans and figuring out what I was going to do with my kids, well, and when I was doing my reading, I kept thinking, how? How are we going to protect the kids? How are we going to protect those teachers? And so during my reading lesson, I changed the letter. I moved the letter from how to who. Who's going to protect our students? Who's going to protect our teachers? I'm not asking you to buy them. I'm asking you to allow them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Monroe.
Thank you for your presentation.
Next, we have Ms. Dana Parker. Dana, if you'll come up and state your name and your address, please.
Dana Parker, 106 Hammock View Court, Adlet, North Carolina. Good evening. Thank you Superintendent Lutz and members of the board for allowing citizens the opportunity to speak. Tonight, I would like to publicly thank our superintendent and our teachers for the time and energy they have devoted to virtual learning. Day in and day out, teachers have worked far beyond their contract hours to ensure that virtual learning is a success. Without their willingness to go above and beyond, our students would not be getting the excellent virtual learning experience they are currently receiving. Like many working parents, my husband and I are juggling full-time jobs while our three children are home alone balancing virtual learning. It certainly hasn't been easy for us, but I can tell you that it hasn't been easy for our teachers either. Earlier in the year, I was quarantined at home for 14 days because of a COVID-19 exposure. Those days at home allowed me to closely monitor the quality of instruction my children were receiving. For my high school children, the transition to virtual has been seamless. My fourth grader, however, had a little more adjustments. Nevertheless, from the pledge every morning to small group instruction, his school day has been nothing short of amazing. With the help of his teachers at Sharbor Elementary, my fourth grader has had an engaging experience. Ms. Kidd, Ms. Kelly, and Ms. Sanderlin have communicated and been available for questions. Their dedication showed firsthand in the extended hours they were working. It has been normal for me to receive emails or dojo messages far into the evening. As the district moves forward trying to incorporate face-to-face learning, we must also balance the needs of those students who need to remain home. These challenges place additional responsibilities on our teachers. I ask that the board carefully examine the demands being placed on teachers, especially those at the elementary level. We cannot continue to expect teachers to do more and more, working beyond their contracts with no compensation. Certainly, these are unprecedented times, and our superintendent and board are facing huge obstacles. However, please continue to think of our teachers. They are taking time away from their own families to ensure that the children of Currituck are being taken care of. I ask you to consider, in what other profession do we expect people to do so much for so little, and in no other profession do we ask them to do it for free? As we work to transition students back into the buildings, please choose a plan that is good for our students while ensuring that we do not overburden our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. That concludes our public comment session. I'd like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Lutz.
Good evening. Those of you who may have watched the work session, we're going to go through the PowerPoint again at this time. For those that were unable to attend, the PowerPoint will be placed upon our website tomorrow before noon, once the board has made a decision about which direction we're going to go. We're going to go very broad at first, so let me do a quick summary. We have been charged, from March 13th, we were, the governor shut down schools, and we kept waiting to come back in the spring. Spring turned into early summer, and we did not return. All the while, we were given a plan sometime in May that said you can plan for Plan A, Plan B, or Plan C. We looked at those plans, and we began to work on those plans. On July 14th, the governor said, well, you can't choose A, you can only choose B or C, and if you choose B, you must do C. That was not on the table in our planning, and so when some, I just wanted the people to understand that that adds a different level of complexity to things when you're asked to do two things at the same time. That has continued to extend from that point in time. I also want to commend our staff and our community for their patience as we work through this pandemic, as we transitioned to an online learning environment for the first nine weeks in a K-12 world. That's something that we had never done before, and I commend our teachers and our community for their support. As we go through this PowerPoint, I'm going to take us through the whole thing, and then we can open up the board for questions at that time. We're going to front-end some of this in the first couple of slides, and we'll get into the details as we work our way through it. So what can families expect when schools reopen? We can expect that schools will look different, that classrooms will look different, that we'll have daily health screenings will be required prior to riding the bus or ending the school building, transportation density will be limited, expect changes to seating, pickup-drop-off procedures, and the potential for double routes. I want to touch on the transportation piece right now. We have run our buses to maximum capacity. That often means 72 students on a bus at the elementary school level in order to be efficient. If we are not efficient under the state's requirement, that we lose funding. I want to make that clear, but we are not going to run our buses at 72 students on a bus at the elementary level. We're going to take that down by a third with a max capacity of 48. Visitors to schools will be limited. All visitors will also participate in health screenings. School meals will be prepackaged for grab-and-go. Students may or may not eat in the cafeteria based on density. Safety measures include cloth face coverings being required for all staff and students, social distancing to the greatest extent possible, and routine cleaning and sanitation procedures, especially for high-frequency touch points. We will have signs and reminders will be posted throughout our facilities. Sharing of items, supplies, and equipment will be limited or not allowed. Mask breaks will be encouraged, especially outdoors. Recess will be permitted to include the use of the playgrounds with sanitation protocols and hand washing required after use. Staff and/or students may have to quarantine. We do anticipate that there will be cases of COVID-19, and that will result in quarantines, and I want to make the public aware that we will put every protocol in place to prevent that from happening, but it will likely occur. We're going to recommend a staggered start for school reopening. Staff with health concerns may not be able to return to in-person instruction. Those staff members will become part of our virtual learning instructional team. This means that students in both the in-person setting and the virtual setting may have a different teacher than was assigned during the first nine weeks. The state requirements and recommendations, we'll have live links to this document for the Lighting Our Way Forward, North Carolina's Guidance on Reopening K-12 Public Schools, and also the Strong Schools North Carolina Public Health Toolkit. The plan that you see up on the screen now are the reopening plans that we were given to work from, which is Plan A, Plan B, and Plan C. Plan A has minimal social distancing. Plan B has moderate social distancing, and Plan C, which we've operated under for the first nine weeks, is remote learning only. New update on the reopening of plans is that under Plan A, six feet social distancing is recommended when feasible but not required. We added a clarifying statement below that, which is when six feet of social distancing is not feasible for seating arrangements, all students should be seated facing the same direction. Under Plan B, and I'm going to touch back, under Plan B, you are required to practice social distancing at all times. Under Plan A, it is less stringent in the classroom. Plan A is an option for elementary schools pre-K5. On September 17th, not so long ago, Governor Roy Cooper announced that the school districts may choose to implement Plan A for elementary schools no earlier than October 5th. Plan A requires important safety measures such as cloth face covering for all students, teachers, and staff, minimal social distancing, and symptom screening. Plan A does not require schools to reduce the number of children in their classroom. Plan B or C are options for grades 6 through 12. Plan B limits density in schools as it relates to social distancing, and Plan B, all students must be six feet socially distanced at all times. At this time, school districts may choose to operate middle and high schools in Plan B or C. If schools choose to operate in Plan B, they must operate under the Plan B health and safety requirements. Again, health and safety requirements include all of Plan A requirements and ensure that six-feet distance can be maintained when people will be stationary. No more than one passenger can be seated per seat on a bus unless family. I want to point out that that component of Plan B makes implementing Plan B quite cumbersome in a district our size, with the number of schools we have and the number of children we have to transport with a bus fleet of 43. If everyone in our district decided to ride a bus, we could not provide transportation as we do not have the number of buses to match the number of students. We haven't ever needed to do that, but we do not have extra buses. Option one, so at this time, I'm going to go through our options, and I'm going to present four different options. Option one, pre-K12, remain in Plan C. That's currently what we are doing. There would be no change, and we would stay with that plan through the duration of the semester, which in Currituck ends on December the 18th. We've outlined opportunities, challenges, and needs that go with each option. Again, this will be posted for a closer review by the public if you would choose to, if you would like to look at that. I'm not going to read those back. Option two, pre-K5 face-to-face. 68 under Plan B are middle schools, and 912 would remain Plan C through the end of the semester. Under this plan, grades pre-K5 would attend school on-site for four days, Monday through Thursdays. Fridays are a half-day remote for all students at the elementary. This would give us time to sanitize during that time and make sure that our teachers are still collaborating in the afternoon so that we ensure that our students that remain online and those that are in school are staying on the same general pace and time. This would require a phase-in entry, which is outlined, and students would return to the building. Half of our students return on the 22nd, the other half on October 23rd, with all students at the elementary level returning on the 26th of October. Under this plan, grade 68 would operate in Cohort A or B on alternating days. To sum it up, they would be in school two days a week and online three days a week in alternating fashion, and they would, we had a day off to sanitize, clean, and to participate in professional development and have time for collaboration across grade levels and within content areas. This plan also allows consideration for special student populations in grades 912 at the high school, which we would allow those that are at risk to return to school along with, as long as those safety protocols are in place. We also consider students with disabilities and allow for an extension of services as well under these plans. Again, opportunities, challenges, and needs are outlined. I'm not going to read through that. Option three, again, to point out how vast and much change occurs, we were sitting here about this time about a month ago, and we were going to discuss Plan B at this time. Instead, we're discussing four different plans and offering up Plan A as well. Option three is pre-K5, Plan B, 612, Plan C. This would be bring two groups of students back through elementary, an A group and a B group, two days in, three days out, and so on and so forth. And option four, pre-K5 under Plan A, same outline as before, four days in, half-day of online on Friday, and 612 would remain on Plan C for the duration of the semester. Again, allowing for small group instruction, in-person instruction for special populations or at-risk groups in grade 612 as needed with safety protocols in place. Those are the four options that we have put forth. Over the past, we have recently done a registration for online learning. Many questions were raised that more details were needed. We hope that this presentation will allow for those questions to be answered. I do want to say at this point that if the board so chooses to change our current course of action, we will be reopening our registration form until Friday at 5:00 p.m. for you to go back in, and if you would like to choose online learning, you will be able to do so. The form will look exactly the same. That is not a survey, that is a registration form. To this day, we have 313 students in grades pre-K5 registered for virtual learning by the cutoff date. Again, we're going to reopen that. Families selecting this option will remain in the setting through the end of the semester, December 18, 2020. You are not going to be able to opt out once you are in. All students registered for virtual learning will have a licensed teacher, but that teacher may or may not be your child's teacher from the first nine weeks. With the reallocation of staff to the virtual learning setting, face-to-face students may also experience a change in teachers. The virtual learning option will be evaluated at the end of the semester, and its continuation may be contingent upon any further announcements from the governor's office. As of today, we had 33 students at Central op for online learning. We had 38 from Griggs and 55 from-- We had 38 from Griggs and 55 from Jarvisburg. Notts Island, we had 18 students. Mayock Elementary, we had 60. And Charbor Elementary, we had 89 students opt for online learning. I believe that's an 80.
It's an 80, yeah.
A little blurry. It's an 80 from Mayock Element, correction. So again, our, not, no surprise, but our northern buildings had, with more students, had more students opt in that direction. Across each grade level, pre-K, we have eight students. District-wide, we had 42 in kindergarten, 45 in first, 51 in second, 50 in third, 61 in fourth, 50 in fifth. I wanted to thank the community for their input through their surveys that helped inform decision-making and putting our plans together. Our staff provided us rich input through various times, including our last Friday in a meeting with their elementary staff and getting their opinions regarding how we can move forward with both in-person and a concept of remote instruction. And we appreciate the high level of input from those surveys. We had over 2,800 responses on the last survey that we had put out. That had closed on the 15th. We were going to use that to inform our decisions as we presented a Plan B. And again, on the 17th of September, the governor largely made that survey information immaterial. What can you expect in our facilities? We'll have signings and markings indicating best practices and requirements, hand sanitizer stations throughout the facility, while our floors marked. And I, I look at it as our kids shouldn't have any problem if and when they return following the signs, looking at the markings on the floor. This, any retail store, any food service that we go to at this time, I think everybody is familiar with those. Our facilities will have automatic hand sanitizers. They've been delivered to each elementary school. We have concentrated coronavirus-rated solutions. Spray bottles and cloths are in place at all schools. Second Clorox Total 360 machine. We have two of those, and they are excellent at disinfecting. And plans are in place for utilizing these machines to disinfect classrooms and restrooms at all elementary schools weekly when students return to the schools. And we will also be changing our custodial shifts to ensure that our building is thoroughly cleaned when our children and our staff walk into the building. Let's go over our entry-to-school protocols. Cloth face coverings are required for all. Six-feet social distancing to the greatest extent possible. Staff and students or their parents must answer three health screening questions before entering into the building, loading the bus, or getting out of the car during morning drop-off. And this is where we are learning from districts that have already implemented Plan B. We're picking up how to make this as smooth a process as possible. With morning drop-off and pickups and so on, we recognize that there's going to be some pain points as we work through those processes, but we'll, we'll work to make them as smooth as possible. Visitors will be limited. Parents will not be able to walk their children into the building in the mornings. Persons entering the building will have a temperature check and answer the three health screening questions. This is a chart walking us through suspected, presumptive, or confirmed positive COVID-19 cases. We will follow the requirements as outlined regarding what it means to quarantine and what would require a quarantine. The better job we do with following safety protocols and the guidelines, the less need we will have to quarantine classes and so on and so forth. Each, each building is required to have an isolation room at each school for symptomatic students and staff. Anyone with a temperature of 100.4 or greater will be asked to leave campus. Anyone answers yes to any of the three health screening questions will be asked to leave campus. We've also attached a reference guide for suspected, presumptive, or confirmed cases of COVID-19 on this PowerPoint. We will also be providing on our website a COVID-19 dashboard, which will update every Friday. It will outline our total population, the number of cases, and the percentages of positive tests. It will not be a running live ticker. We will update that weekly. School transportation. I've mentioned this before. This is going to be a challenge, and especially for our middle and high school. Elementary routes have been created. We're in the process of that. Routes are being driven to ensure accuracy and improve efficiency. Hand sanitizers will be installed on the buses. Safety preparedness kits have been made, and will be on each bus. The density on buses will be reduced. It's not a requirement for one student per seat. So again, with the elementary, we will go with two, preferably family members if possible. Students must sit in their assigned seats, and cloth face coverings will be required. We are hoping for parental support. I know we get a lot of that with our pickup and drop-off already, and I'm sure families, should we choose to return, will be creative with carpools and other ways to get students to school and do the best we can. Parents of students, to get on the bus, parents of students must answer three health screening questions. A temperature screening will be completed. If three health screening questions are all no, and the student does not have a temperature of 100.4 or greater, they still will be permitted on the bus. If one or more of our health screening questions is answered yes, the student will not be permitted on the bus, and a parent must take the child home. Once on the bus, the student must sit in their assigned seat. School nutrition. This is a, anyone watching, I'm happy that you get to hear this, that the USDA has extended the waiver to allow schools to continue serving meals at no cost to any child between the ages of 1 through 18 through the end of the school year. That means you have no forms filled out, nothing. You can get your breakfast and lunch at no cost. All students face-to-face and virtual are eligible to receive a breakfast and lunch at no cost each day. I encourage you to take advantage of that.
Dr. Lutz, just to clarify, that's to the end of the calendar year, December 30th right now.
Thank you, Ms. Dowdy. That is the end of the calendar year. When you're in school, you think of the year as a double year, but the rest of the world, that would be December 31st. School nutrition in the school setting. Again, free-for-all students. Six-feet social distancing required in the cafeteria, which will limit the use of the cafeteria. This has been a frequent question from parents, wondering what, what is, how are we going to eat? How are the kids going to eat? What does this look like? So the cafeteria will be able to be used, but we, those, the social distancing protocols must be followed there. So we're going to encourage classes to eat outside. They'll be able to eat in their classroom. Sometimes they'll eat in the cafeteria. With each building being a little bit different, and the size of that cafeteria varying in each one, and how that layout is, each cafeteria and each eating situation is going to look a little bit different. The menu is planned with all required components with no additional menu or entree choices. And again, to be clear, it's a grab-and-go. You're not going to walk up and say, oh, I think I'm going to have a hot dog instead of pizza today. It's your, there will not be a choice given. Extra time will be built in between meal periods for extra cleaning and disinfecting. Signage will indicate the flow of traffic into and exiting the cafeteria and service lines. For virtual learning, it's, again, it's free. Pre-ordering is required if you are in virtual, and you'll still be able to go to a pickup site to receive your food. Currituck County Schools will continue to suspend, suspend the use of our facilities for indoor community use. We still have to follow the state guidelines regarding the indoor usage. And an update on athletics. The NCHSAA has moved the traditional sports calendar around to accommodate the impacts of COVID-19. Sports are compacted, and seasons are in a different order. Those of you in high school and middle school, if you haven't seen that information, it will be coming out soon. Middle schools do not fall under high school guidelines, and so the middle schools in the region are working out their details separately from the high schools, but certainly within having discussion. Preseason conditioning has already begun, and recommended that athletics, I'm going to recommend that athletics resume following the NCHSAA guidelines and protocol. The school calendar is going to be, need to be amended, and I'm recommending that on October 16th, 19th, and 20th, and 21st. 21st is going to be for orientations, for return for our students as we, as students are going to, some students are going to have to change teachers. I would like to recommend that our teachers get workdays on the 16th, which is the last day of the grading period. On a side note, our computer system powers school. When you change students or move students, it is very cumbersome. It is not user-friendly, and it takes some time. And so we're going to need those days to transition, the 16th, 19th, and 20th, and the 21st for orientations. They will be required workdays for teachers pre-K5 only. This will give staff time to prepare classrooms, instructional plans, and orientation. Questions?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Plan 2, K-5 Plan A, middle school hybrid Plan B, starting in November. And we seek to add additional support for the K-2 with substitutes, teachers' aides, some way to get some additional boots on the ground. And I'd like to not see the schools closed on Friday. I'd like the deep cleaning to be done on the evening hours.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Motion did not carry. Would anyone else like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we go with Plan 2, Option 2. I would like to have less, as little as possible, professional development so that teachers can collaborate with one another more, and we can ensure that our remote learning students feel the connection to all the teachers through that. And I would like to see Friday as a planning day, cleaning day.
So to be clear, the Friday would be a half-a-day remote learning.
Right.
And a half-a-day, cleaning can occur during remote learning because our students won't be there, and the back half-day would be used for teacher support and to.
That is correct. So the students would not be face-to-face on Friday.
Not face-to-face, but virtual.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second.
I'd like to discuss it.
Okay, I have a motion, and I have a second. Any discussion, Mr. Crowder?
Yes, ma'am. So I'd like least disruption with the virtual learners, particularly in the K-2. That's why I want more substitutes, teachers' aides, some additional support through those younger grades so that we can deliver the services to everyone with as little changing of teachers as possible. I believe that if we had those additional teachers' aides or substitutes working with the teachers, they could possibly do some of the virtual instruction and then rotate back to the class instruction, teaching the same lesson plan, thus keeping the same teacher. I realize that we have a percentage of teachers that aren't going to come back in the building, so there are still going to be people returning that won't be able to maintain their teachers. And I'm not suggesting that any or all of these situations won't happen to some degree. We've needed teachers' aides and additional help for a long time. We needed much more now than we ever did. It's going to make it difficult for working parents who are trying to get back to work to have to be home on Fridays. So thus, I would prefer to have the kids stay in the classroom that are going to be attending school on Fridays and doing the cleaning around that. And with that said, that's all I have to say.
All right, I think there's a reason for that virtual learning on Fridays if Dr. Lutz would like to let us know what that reasoning is to keep them virtual at least half a day every week.
It serves two purposes. One, it allows for that good deep clean that we want to get in for our schools. And the second thing is that should we have an uptick in the virus, or should we have to remove our students from the building again, or if we have to close a building, it allows us to transition somewhat seamlessly back to the online learning platform. So all of that good work that our teachers have done to this point, we can continue to build on that, and, and it gives us a little bit of a safety place as well.
Yes, sir. And, and I thought about that. And so my suggestion would be that we do the virtual while we're still in school. And we have the computer there, and we're still at school, and the parents can be at work, and we're still going through the process, and we're delivering the virtual, but we're virtual in-person. So we could still teach the same program on the same device as if we weren't there. And so we'd be going through those motions, and we would keep those skills honed, but we still wouldn't inconvenience the working parents, which this whole situation is, you know, not comfortable for anyone, but I'm trying to cause the least disruption as possible. And that's why I made that suggestion.
I, I know Ms. Parker pointed out in her comments about how hard our teachers have been working, and I know we have several teachers who are really working probably 15 hours a day, some of them, just every free-minute weekends. I've heard from them, I've heard from their spouses, I've heard from their parents. They are, we cannot keep them going at this pace because they're going to get sick. I mean, they are really going to get sick. And so if we could have this Friday, half-a-day virtual, half-a-day planning, perhaps they would not have to work these long days like we've, we've put on them.
Yeah.
And, and teacher assistance. We do need teacher assistance, but we do not have, our fund balance is at such a low, low point right now. We would love to have more, I would love to have more teacher assistance. I've always advocated for that, but, you know, I know Dr. Lutz said he was going to pull in people that he could shift around from schools that weren't and try and get some help. It may not be our full-fledged certified teacher assistance, but, so that's why I'm, that's my motion for that.
Yes, ma'am. And I'm going to go on to say that we should be looking at this going forward and prioritizing our spending. We've had ample opportunity to spend money in other areas most, as of late. We spent about a quarter million dollars in the central office creating positions, okay? We could have used that money for teachers' aides, but we didn't. Now, we can't do nothing about that now, but we should do, do something about it going forward, and.
Mr. Crowder, can you clarify where we got a quarter million dollars?
We created a director of transportation that we didn't have, which recreated another instructional coordinator and another position, I'm not sure the exact title, but it was.
It's the Director of Student Services at Ms. Arrington.
Okay. Never mind the person. I don't want to make reference to any person. It's got nothing to do with them. What it's got to do with is spending money in areas that's reoccurring, instead of putting it back into the classroom.
That's not a true statement.
Mr. Crowder.
Yes, ma'am, that's very true.
Okay. Dr. Lutz, if you would like to explain.
I would just like to clarify, so when we walked through those, when, when I was in the interim role and we went through the different positions, we tried to keep those as cost-neutral as possible, and I don't need to necessarily get into the specifics, but I, I just want to be clear that we did do our best to keep everything as cost-neutral as possible.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion concerning our option, Dr. Dovny?
Originally, I thought about maybe staying with Option C because that provided maximum safety for, you know, students and teachers. But then we gave, you know, the parents the option of keeping their children home and learning virtually. And we do have some teachers that are high-risk that have doctor's notes that, you know, can stay home. But my last concern before I vote is for those teachers that are scared, that, you know, aren't high-risk.
Yeah, the unknown, yes.
That, you know, that concerns me, but I think Dr. Lutz alluded to the fact that we're going to have a virtual academy, and maybe those teachers can apply to teach in the virtual academy.
Yes, we will open up, well, we open up the online application, yes, the online application, not survey, the online application tomorrow for students and parents. Once again, we'll also be opening up an online application for teachers to teach in a virtual academy.
And I'd just like to say that I, I was at a school today and spoke with several teachers, and one of them had already, on the idea that we were going to start back, had already gone through, measured out, had her desk, that kind of thing. And this particular teacher only had three students who were going to choose to go virtual. And she had worked in her classroom to set up two separate places, and she thought that last night, she had it all together and thought that she would be able to teach those three children and do both at the same time. And she came back in this morning and tried somewhat of what it was, and she said, it just won't work. It's just not, I just can't do it. And so. And so, I want us to realize that even though it sounds wonderful that we not change students, our teachers are trying, they're doing, you know, they're trying things, they're, they're going beyond, and so I agree with you that we, we have to, we have to do what we have to do to help them and to give them those opportunities on Friday afternoon to collaborate and be ready. Plus, we want the students, when they come back, when we all, when this all becomes normal again, a new norm, I guess, anyway, but when they come back together, and we have all of the virtual students and all of the students that are in class face-to-face, we want them to be on the same page. They need to, they need to be close to where everybody else is, and that half-day on Friday will, will allow that. My one concern, and I do like to, but the density on the buses for the students in Plan A, the K through five, there isn't a, there isn't anything that says they have to be, we're just trying, recommended limited density, but that doesn't apply to six through eight. Is that correct?
Under six through eight, they can only, we can only have one student per seat, which is, may, I'm putting forth the middle school option for November 9th with the idea that we are going to do our best to try to get the middle schools up and out and moving. I do have some very grave, I'm concerned about the transportation piece and also the staffing, but even more so the transportation piece, as that our worst-case scenario at the elementary level requires the use of 35 buses out of 43, just to get our elementary students to the school. And so I am concerned that we could not, I'm concerned about transporting our middle school kids. We have not gotten that far yet, but I wanted that to be on there, as I want to do everything we can to get our middle school kids back.
Yeah, I want, I want us to be that realization that the limited density is recommended for K, pre-K through five, but it is not recommend, it is not a recommended, it is that they have to be one per seat for-
Correct. They can, we can see, they're not limiting how many students we can put on a bus.
But more.
I ought to, I'm not comfortable putting 72 students on a bus.
Oh, no, no, no. Okay.
I've got a question. Are we going to allow or not allow these type of dividers that Ms. Monroe talked about?
We're in the process of getting price, I'm sorry.
And we, that's a different topic. We have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, okay? Mr. Crowder, if you'd like to, that's okay, if you'd like to state your question to Dr. Lutz.
I'm just trying to understand, are we going to allow, because I know some teachers in some classrooms bring in certain equipment or furniture and other things, and I'm not saying that this is exactly along the same lines. However, just trying to find out if one wanted to build it and provide it themselves, and are we going to allow that, or we not?
We're looking into pricing a common device from a group that outfitted the schools that needed them in Virginia Beach. So we're looking at pricing, is my answer.
Yes, sir. Did you think that we might have that information prior to the reopening of the K through five?
It is not a requirement. Ms. Rose, I'd put you on the spot. Did Edington have these?
They did, they did not.
So, when we, when we've talked to the other buildings, other school districts, we did not see them using that, and so we, we're applying that, and then with further discussion, we did, we are looking into pricing, if that would make our staff more comfortable.
So, beans, we don't have pricing yet, and we just voted, and we're going back to school. Are the teachers going to be allowed to bring those in or not? If they want to purchase some of them?
The device that I'm looking at?
That, that device right there, yes, sir.
I'm not sure.
Okay. And when do we think we know that? So we can communicate.
When we decide when our kids will be back in the building, and also, so if the, well, we just passed it.
Yeah, I think so.
So, I need to make that decision before the 22nd.
Yes.
I just need to ensure, I, if I can have devices here that are common, I'd rather go with the common device, is my answer.
Yes, sir.
My concern is I don't want to become the, the construction police.
I understand. What is our policy for people bringing in stuff right now? Do we have one?
I don't know. I'd have to look that up.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda is approved. We have our information items. We have our, a change on the upcoming work session that was originally scheduled for November 5th. That will be moved to November 10th, and as of right now, that will be held at the NAP Professional Learning Center at 4:00 PM. We will have our November 10th Board of Education meeting at 6:30, and we're going to see if we can have it here or at another location, but if not, that will be held at the NAP Professional Learning Center as well. Board member comments? Call on Mr. Crowder.
I'd like to let Mr., Dr. Lutz go first, because he indicated he had something to say about accreditation, and I'd like to hear about it before I have my comments.
Ms. Dowdy and I have been in contact with, what is the name again?
Cognia.
Cognia, I apologize. And I have had a conversation with Mr. Stike Leather, and we are going, it's on our future agendas to get it moving forward. But there's a, there's an ongoing cost with it, and we need to make sure that everybody's on board to assure that that cost is going to be met, but we are certainly going to move forward with accreditation.
Thank you. My turn. All right. So anyhow, I hope everybody has been far and well. I've heard a lot of positive, and I've heard some not positive, depending on whom you talk to. But certainly, I do believe that the teachers have probably been doing a lot more work than they are used to and is required of them, and I appreciate them for it. I, also, I'm disappointed that I've asked repeatedly for a couple of things to be added to the agenda, and I can't seemingly get them on there. At the last meeting, I read a general statute pertaining to a policy outlining nepotism. Now, I've yet to get a legal opinion, and it's just, it's very disappointing. So anyhow, God bless Currituck County.
Ms. Rose?
I would like to give a shout-out to all those folks who have really had to go above and beyond their expected job description, including the technology crew, school nutrition, custodians, and all the teachers who really are, teachers always spend extra hours doing for their students, but they've had to do even more during this pandemic, and all the other personnel. I mean, I know everybody with their school system has gone above and beyond. This COVID has not been easy for any of us. I'd like to thank all of you, staff, parents, who reached out and shared your thoughts about going back to school, and at the end of the day, we heard from 15% that felt they needed to stay home, so that led us to believe 85% felt like they, we needed to return to class, or at least have that option. And one more thing, this year, 2020, is the recognition of women being able to vote for 100 years. And with that being said, we've got early voting starting October 15th, Election Day, November 3rd. Whether you're a woman or a man, exercise your right to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Ms. Craft?
Yes, I echo your, Ms. Rose's sentiments. We are, we have an amazing, amazing group of people that work for Currituck County Schools, and I couldn't be prouder to be a part of it. I visited the high school and the middle school today and saw that they were frantically working on the, the, yeah, the track. My brain just totally went away. The track today, so that looks like it's on its, on its final stages, maybe. I also want to give a shout-out to the librarian at Central Elementary School. There's a little library set up in the front, at the front door, where kids can check out books and, and bring them back. So just everybody's finding ways to, to get our students where they have opportunities to learn, so just thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Craft. Dr. Dobney?
Yes, I'd just like to thank the teachers, staff, administration, in helping us get through this pandemic, and also like to thank them for helping us come up with plans to reopen the school. And lastly, I just pray that we have the safest possible school year that we can have-
Yes.
And vote November 10th.
Dr. Lutz?
I've said several times already, I can't applaud our staff enough for what they have done to this point during this time. Our community has been tremendous, and appreciate the, the kind notes and outreach that you've given during that time. On a little bit of a side note, to bring a smile of all years for Halloween to be on a Saturday, and I know those elementary teachers, there is a bonus. That is, it is a full moon, a blue moon at that.
Or did.
But we do have that. And I'm concluding my first month in this seat, and I, again, I appreciate the board for the opportunity and get an opportunity to leave a wonderful county and a wonderful school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Hats off to our technology department. We couldn't do this without you. We appreciate everything that you do. I want to take this time, I think it's a common theme, to thank Dr. Matt Lutz and his dedicated team for all their hard work concerning our return to learn, remote learning, and in-person instruction. I would also like to commend our teachers, students, for all of your teamwork, and that's what it takes, is teamwork, and I love seeing everybody working together to make good things happen for Currituck County. As everyone is aware, November 3rd, you will have the right to, and the privilege to vote. Please take the time to research the candidates that are running for office and cast your ballot for the individual that you feel will serve our community in a positive direction. Thank you so much. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.